Good evening and welcome to the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. You can join the meeting in person at 5555 Perimeter Drive or access the meeting via the city’s website, the live stream on the city’s website. We welcome public participation, including public comments on cases. At this time, if you’ll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one God, with liberty and justice for all.
I will ask forgiveness, I had a medical procedure yesterday and my brain’s a little foggy. All right, at this time I’ll turn the time over to Ms. Beal. Would you please call roll?
Mr. Supalak?
Here.
Mr. Way?
Here.
Mr. Chinok?
Here.
Ms. Call?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Beal. At this time, I am looking for a motion to accept tonight’s documentation into the record and approval of the minutes for the April 21st meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Beal.
Mr. Chinok?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to city council when rezoning and planning of property are under consideration. In such cases, city council receives a recommendation from the commission. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone intending to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. There are no cases tonight eligible for the consent agenda. There’s a request to postpone cases four, five, and six to the June 9th meeting. Case four is, they’re all share an address, 4,000 West Dublin Granville Road. Case numbers 22-051 CU, 22-028 PDP, and 22-060 PP for conditionally use preliminary plat and final plat. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. The rules and regulations state that no new items are to be introduced after 10:30 PM. At this time, anyone intending to address the commission on any of the administrative cases this evening, will you please stand, raise your right hand, and answer in the affirmative? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission? Thank you. All right, first case on our agenda this evening is Bremley Estates at PID 273-012584, 22-003 PP, 22-002 FP for preliminary and final plat. This application is a request for the subdivision of 4.66 acres into four single-family lots and one open space reserve. The zone is, the site is zoned R2, limited suburban residential district, and located north of the intersection of Nature Drive and Forest Run Drive. Our case presentation this evening will be handled by Ms. Martin. Welcome, Ms. Martin. I’ll turn the time over to you.
Great, good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for review and a recommendation of approval to city council for preliminary and final plats. The 4.66 acre site is located north of the Woods of Indian Run subdivision, south of single-family properties presently located within Washington Township, south of the Ark, which is an annex of the Dublin Baptist Church, and on the east side of Kaufman Road. You’ll see here that the North Fork of the Indian Run is located immediately to the east of the site, and the site does have floodplain and floodway along the eastern side. So a bit of background about this site. The site was annexed into the City of Dublin in 2013 from Washington Township. At that time, the site was rezoned from rural, which is the standard designation given to all properties upon annexation, to R2, which is limited suburban residential district. Simultaneously, the applicant at the time, different from the applicant today, brought forward a proposal for a preliminary plat for four lots, including the extension of Nature Drive. At the time, this plat was accepted by city council. In regards to this application, this proposal is similar in nature to the 2014 proposal in that this is also for four lots. You’ll notice that Nature Drive is proposed to be a cul-de-sac in this iteration. As such, the applicant brought this proposal before the commission for an informal review in 2021. At that time, the commission discussed a number of factors identified on the screen, including the surrounding neighborhood character established within the Woods of Indian Run, providing vehicular connectivity and the opportunity for future development, the maintenance and character of open spaces, and then very specifically the preference for a wet basin. So the updates that the applicant has made in response to the Planning and Zoning Commission’s comments, as well as staff’s comments, are highlighted here on the screen. The applicant has provided a reserve to be dedicated to the City of Dublin. This open space reserve includes the wet basin as requested. Additionally, the applicant has further studied and sized stormwater management facilities. This proposed preliminary and final plat establishes four lots, which vary in size. At the informal review, the Planning and Zoning Commission was supportive of four lots, as well as the varied size and configuration. The approximately 0.5 acres of open space meets the subdivision regulations requirement for the provision of open space from a numeric standpoint, although the open space does not contain any activating or amenitized features. Staff has summarized the outstanding items between the city and the proposed plan. These items were previously detailed at the informal review, as well as within the staff report. The primary item for the commission’s consideration, as well as finding our recommendation of disapproval, is the lack of connectivity that is proposed to be provided to any future development to the north. That’s very inherently tied to the community plan. The community plan contemplates land both within the city, but also beyond the city, as land currently outside of the city is anticipated to eventually be annexed into the city and potentially developed with additional single-family development that has a future land use consistent with this parcel. Regarding engineering, the sanitary sewer depth necessary has not been fully studied and provided. The existing sanitary sewer depth at the north side of the Woods of Indian Run neighborhood is approximately 23 feet deep. The sanitary sewer design manual adopted by the City of Columbus and supported by the City of Dublin requires that sanitary sewer depth be no less than 10 feet deep, and that’s not simply at the north property line of this subject parcel, but beyond, and that’s the northernmost extent of the tributary area. So at the northern extent, seven feet of sanitary sewer depth is provided. Washington Township Fire, which as you know provides fire service to the City of Dublin, and we work closely in all our plan reviews, from planning to building standards, has reviewed this application and is recommending multiple points of ingress and egress. Today, new single-family neighborhoods would not be able to be established if more than 30 lots are accessed by a single point. Approval of this plat furthers a condition where you would have 100 lots accessing a single point, and it precludes the opportunity to rectify this deficiency in the future. Finally, there are opportunities for additional coordination and connectivity, recognizing that that would be a joint effort on behalf of the property owner, the city, and adjacent property owners. So in review of the subdivision regulations and the parameters by which staff consistently reviews plats, we are recommending disapproval. This is a joint recommendation from all staff’s reviewing bodies. With that, I would be happy to answer any more specific questions, otherwise the applicant’s team is also here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Tonight, we’re going to handle questions for this application for staff separate from any questions for the applicant. So looking to the commission, are there any questions that you would have for Ms. Martin or others from staff at this time? Mr. Way?
One of the things that I was surprised about was the new size of the detention basin from the previous documents that we reviewed, and I just was curious about the increase in size and was this actually the size that it was meant to be originally, or why did it get bigger?
Welcome, Mr. Hendershaw.
Good evening. So I think that as a result of just further refinement of the stormwater management design and calculations, which resulted in a larger retention basin. I think part of it, too, is previously there was a bio-retention basin being proposed, and there is a component of underground storage as part of that control measure. The city expressed concerns with maintenance of that type of control measure, just given the scale of that bio-retention basin. So working with the applicant, the, you know, the design moved towards a wet retention basin, and that was the size that’s necessary to accommodate the site.
Thank you.
And just one other call out, Mr. Fishman, that was one of the concerns that he had was converting this from a dry basin to a wet basin for aesthetic reasons. Thank you, Mr. Hendershaw. Other questions for staff at this time? Mr. Chinok?
So going from the, to the cul-de-sac, what was the reasoning behind that? Because I mean, we’re not gaining any more lots by doing that. What was the, I missed the point of changing a cul-de-sac and losing that connectivity?
So Nikki, if you could distinguish the previous applicant’s application versus this applicant’s application, as Mr. Chinok wasn’t present for the previous, as he’s a new addition to the commission?
Yeah, so the preliminary plat depicted on the screen is not representative of anything that the present applicant has submitted to the city. This is a document that the city has on file and was accepting of in 2014. Further, council made an action to accept this configuration. That plat approval has since expired, and a new property owner, an applicant, has come forward. The applicant has elected to propose a configuration not consistent with the plat that is acceptable to city staff, and therefore is, in this case, proposing a cul-de-sac. While no development is proposed to the north today, the not preserve, not preserving the opportunity to allow that to happen in the future is short-sighted.
So just for clarification there, Ms. Martin, the community plan, the transportation plan, as adopted by the city and expected of the city, is the cul-de-sac conducive or consistent with that plan?
So the community plan plans for land beyond the city’s current corp limit. The land immediately to the north of this is beyond the city’s corp limit, which you can see because it’s grayed out. That being said, it has a future land use designation, and we designate land uses so when those come into the city, they can develop in a consistent manner. So we do anticipate that that will come into the city, and at such time, it would be our anticipation that this nature drive extension would facilitate orderly development. The thoroughfare plan, in addition to the future land use, is a component of the community plan. The thoroughfare plan does not depict neighborhood streets, and that is intended to allow flexibility in alignment of those streets. It is the city’s consistent practice to require developers to provide a stub connection. The Planning and Zoning Commission has most recently approved Highland Glen Development, which is immediately east of Highland Cray and north of Post Road. With that, the commission approved the extension of three street stubs within Post Preserve.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Mr. Way?
Okay, this is a little bit of follow-on from my first question, but so Reserve A has not changed since the last iteration of this, but the detention basin now occupies a much larger area. So could you help us understand, so who owns and maintains the detention basin in this? And part of it, Reserve A would be technically open space, right? The rest is not open space, it’s private property with it. So could you help us understand that a little bit?
Yeah, so I would say this configuration is not typical to what we would see, not typical to what we would see. Typically, we would see a stormwater management basin wholly within the reserve, regardless of who the maintaining entity is. In this case, the applicant, and they can speak more to this, had indicated that the total lot size of Lot 4 was important to retain. This configuration, Reserve A, meets the open space requirement. The basin meets the amount of stormwater capacity that is needed, and then easements on the plat allow that to be maintained for functionality by the City of Dublin.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? All right, is the applicant here? I’d like to invite you up. Once you reach the microphone, if you could enable the microphone, wait for the green light, and state your name and address for the record. It is not on. It looks like it’s going on and off. Can we, do we have someone who can? Should not.
It should stay on. Is it on now?
No.
Oh, there it is.
I mean, if that’s inconvenient, you’re welcome to give your applicant presentation from the staff podium.
And thank you, Madam Chair. My name’s Tom Hart, my address is 5029 Cemetery Road, representing the applicant, and Mr. RJ Sabatino, who’s with me here. We’d like to do a joint presentation. I’ll make some overall comments and address a couple points in the staff report, and then RJ will address the balance of the staff report and kind of where we are. Up front, I want to note that we have been working, the applicant’s been working with city staff on multiple issues for several months, and the issues that remain and the differences we have with the staff report reflect really disagreements on policy and, you know, kind of settled city policy, rather than a lack of effort to try to work through and resolve the items that remain. Staff, of course, is, has a staff report in front of you that reflects city policy to a T and as applied by staff. Staff, of course, is well-respected, very professional, easy to work with, but the question before the commission really boils down to whether a cul-de-sac design is better than a connecting road for the best development, the highest value, for really what amounts to suburban infill development at the site. Kind of a bigger question, related question, is do standard subdivision regulations always fit, and should they always be applied without exception to this type of infill development on smaller parcels? I suspect this question will, has risen before and will continue to occur and reoccur because really we’re dealing with development regulations that are, that were developed for greenfield sites and not, and don’t always work in a situation like this with infill. The connector road through and through traffic will negatively impact livability here. Placement of a stub street will impact value and market expectations. This is the case not only for the four proposed lots, but the property to the north as well and its future develop, developability and viability. The property to the north is also limited in size and geometry. A full northern road connection to Kaufman comes not only with the volume of through traffic, but the location of the road, its placement, the sheer amount of asphalt on the earth, the right-of-way widths that come with it. All those factors going through that northern, those northern properties would affect future development options and viability, as they affect Bremley. There’s no evidence that this site or the property to the north are needed for moving traffic and should be burdened with that function. Quickly, I want to address a couple points in the staff report in details. In terms of the fire comments, again, we understand and respect fires and the fire department’s code-related need to always want two access points, but this site didn’t create the existing condition where there’s one access point and has been for some years for the Woods of Indian Run. Requiring a stub does not mean the second access point will ever materialize. It just might mean that the development won’t happen because it makes it less viable. To Mr. Chinok’s question earlier, we believe that the reason that the former plat with the sub-street didn’t develop is because a cul-de-sac would be better, and in one of the biggest housing booms of our time, the site didn’t develop because it, a stub street doesn’t work as well. In terms of the path connection, the comment in the staff report, and I think that came out at the previous Planning and Zoning meeting, everybody should recognize that such a public path connection through this property would first mean accessing and gaining approval through another property owner, I believe it’s the Jenkins property, that’s, you know, between the current public path and this property. A path on the Bremley property would have the challenges of navigating the drainage needs, now a significant storm pond with drainage easements, would impact the floodplain and potentially the floodway, as well as the stream itself. Placement too close to the proposed home on Lot 4 would also create privacy and security and value concerns for that property itself. Overall, the applicant is attempting to create a lot and a home value here with a different expectation than standard subdivision design. We just don’t believe that through traffic and a public shared-use path through the site will meet, will help us meet such goals. We believe a cul-de-sac design works best for such value and livability expectations for the property and the neighborhood. With that, RJ Sabatino is going to address the rest of the staff report, details, Madam Chair.
Good evening, RJ Sabatino. Thank you, Mr. Hart. So as Mr. Hart said, it’s been...
Excuse me, sorry, Mr. Sabatino, could you state your address for the record?
2705 Donna Drive. So as Mr. Hart was saying, we’ve been here previously a few times, I believe seven months ago. So we’ve been working through with the city diligently in good faith for a plan that we believe will finally work, and that plan does include a cul-de-sac. We’ve been in discussions in depth with our neighbors who are in the City of Dublin to the south, the Woods of Indian Run, and they’ve had, they’ve had a couple questions, they’ve had a couple things that they’ve wanted us to agree to. We’ve agreed to all of their points and believe and know that they are also agreeable and wishful for a cul-de-sac as opposed to a sub-street. I mean, it’s something that makes sense, something that will actually happen. So I would encourage, I suppose, the commission to consider the wishes of their residents to the south, rather than something that is very unlikely to happen. I will also note as well, if you can see here, this is a floodplain map. So the property to the north, we’re, we’re right here. The square here, and then Nature Drive stub. So this thick black line is floodplain. It just is impossible with turn radiuses, and, I mean, not only impossible from an engineering standpoint, but from a practability standpoint, for a road to ever go north, practical-wise, because, I mean, we have a church here. The church has been there for decades, and, I mean, we believe that the church is going to be there for decades longer. As far as the floodplain goes, I mean, the floodplain makes much of the site to the north, I mean, fairly unusable. So, I mean, we’d like to come with solutions. We believe we have a solution as far as our design, we think our design works. I may also suggest an alternative to the wish for a stub if the property wishes to be developed. So, oops. Here is a picture of our plat. So if, unlikely but if, by some chance, the City of Dublin annexes the property to the north, a simple workable solution would be to extend Arlington further to the east and to create a cul-de-sac. And that would conform with the City of Dublin’s future land use plan of having one to two homes to the acre around a desirable cul-de-sac. So we think that’s a workable alternative. Moving on from the cul-de-sac and the right-of-way issue, I’ll also add a couple things specific to the staff report. I may just kind of go line by line here real quick. So as it relates to the sidewalk, the sidewalk and the path of, that you see up there on the screen, and the request for connectivity from our site, which is not adjacent to the path. So we have, I mean, this is sort of an impossible request from staff, in that we would have to go through multiple property owners, and, I mean, much of that path is already in the floodway. I mean, we’re going to, we’re going to have significant impacts on the floodplain if we do that. So we’re extending, with our cul-de-sac, we’re extending our sidewalk north, and like the rest of the neighborhood, we can have our, have our four homeowners come down and access the path via the sidewalk. Moving on to the sanitary, there was a note in, in the staff reports regarding the manuals description of requiring a 10-foot minimum sanitary depth. And it does say that in the City of Columbus manual, but it also does say, under extenuating circumstances, that that can be shallower. And we’ve met with staff multiple times, and I think this is actually unfortunately left out of the staff report, met with staff multiple times regarding the soil conditions on this property. There is a substantial amount of bedrock on this property that makes it very, very, very difficult to excavate low enough for the sanitary to be deep, 10 foot deeper. So for that reason, another workable alternative that has been done by the City of Columbus and the City of Dublin in the past, we think that makes sense. We think, hope you do as well. Moving slightly on, I know that one of the gentlemen had a question or concern regarding the stormwater. The stormwater pond, or the retention pond, is going to be owned and managed by the homeowners association with easement access for the City of Dublin, if, for whatever reason, they may need to come and maintain that as well, although that won’t happen. I suppose I will close with saying that this is a plan that makes sense, and a plan that, I mean, we think needs to happen in order for any development to go on. These four lots, we plan for Roman, Ellen, and Hughes to construct on. It’s their wish to have a cul-de-sac. No, I mean, nobody, the Woods of Indian Run, doesn’t want a stub, and we’re excited to move forward, and we understand there are some conditions in the staff reports, and hope for the commission’s affirmative... staff reports and hope for the commission's affirmative vote this evening. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabatino. All right, we will handle questions at this point in time. We will hold for deliberation later in tonight's meeting. Looking to the commission, are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Way.
I just want to go back to your comment about the soil conditions and that there's bedrock. I don't know if we saw that information anywhere and is, is there any way to confirm that or are there any documents that-
Well, we, we've, we have, and we have also provided multiple times geotechnical soils reports to the city of Dublin's staff and we were happy to, I don't have it on hand, but I think they can confirm what we've sent to them, to be true.
The soil condition that you mentioned and the bedrock is a, I guess I'm trying to confirm, is that a limiting factor in this argument?
So part of the development of this site, unfortunately, if there's bedrock in the area, that's just part of the development. I mean, the requirement for the sanitary sewer to be a minimum 10-foot depth at the northernmost point or upstreammost point for parcels upstream that would be served by the sanitary sewer, that, that is just kind of a cut and dry requirement. I have reached out to the city of Columbus, explained the project and what's being proposed, and they basically said if there is no other acceptable alternative to provide sanitary sewer access to this, the upstream parcels, Columbus would not be supportive of the design that's being proposed. So in the city of Dublin's opinion, there is no other acceptable alternative to provide sanitary sewer access to the upstream parcels.
Thank you.
No play on gravity or anything.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Hendershot. Other questions for the applicant?
I have a question on the, excuse me, on the floodplain that you represented. I would argue that they, having the connectivity there actually improves the, the floodplain development above because you're bringing the development in differently on that, if that adjacent parcel is at some point developed. I feel like the floodplain actually helps that argument to have a, have a connector as opposed to a cul-de-sac because it makes the floodplain, makes that parcel to the north more buildable if you've got a connected, connectivity as opposed to putting a cul-de-sac there.
Mr. Chinick, did you have a question?
Sorry. Can you, can you, can you explain the, how you, I guess, I just want to understand a little, if you could talk a little bit more about what you were saying about the northern parcel development in regards to the flood-
I think this is, I mean, this is a very workable and more realistic option, right? I mean, to back up, on our side, I mean, we don't have any, I mean, we're at minimal impact on the floodplain.
Mr. Sabatino, if I could pause you for a moment. Mr. Hendershot, can you talk through what we're looking at as far as the, the maps with the different floodplanes designated?
Yeah, so the floodplain is the area that's designated in blue on the screen. The flood, I'm sorry, the floodway is the area designated as blue on the screen, and then the, the floodplain is the red shaded area. So just taking a look at the, the properties to the north and just working on other projects across the city previously, there is a substantial amount of developable area to the properties to the north. So I don't necessarily agree with the statements being made by the applicant about that the site to the north is not developable. I guess conversely, there seems to be an opportunity to utilize that as maybe an open space or some sort of amenity to that development to the north. So I certainly don't think the, the floodplain on the parcels to the north is something that would prohibit the development of, of those parcels.
Just for our benefit, could you scroll down a little bit as the floodplain does not end at the bottom of the screen, just so we can see the other developable area?
So I suppose, I mean, you look at that and you see where your mouse is, that's the church, right? Oh, I guess, church, a little northwest, left?
Yes, the 7200 Kaufman Road is the church, so if you-
Is that church going anywhere, I suppose? But kind of going back to, I mean, examples of stub roads. The examples provided in the staff report, I mean, they all go to these large greenfield sites, right? Not in fill like this. There is room to develop, most certainly. And something like this allows for that.
So regarding a potential street connection on Kaufman Road, so having the street extension as part of the subject parcel provides the opportunity to potentially connect into Kaufman Road. And, you know, likely the street on the, the west side of Kaufman Road there to align those access points. What the city is trying to avoid, if you think about it, if we cul-de-sack the subject parcel having, let's say 7250 Kaufman Road comes in with a development proposal, they're going to want an access point off of Kaufman Road. Let's say 7190 Kaufman Road comes in with their own development proposal, that's another access point off of Kaufman Road. So what we're trying to do is consolidate access along Kaufman Road in addition to taking under consideration the feedback from Washington Township Fire Department about not perpetuating an existing condition with a number of lots within the Woods of Indian Run that just have one singular access point.
Thank you, Mr. Hendershot. Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Sabatino, thank you.
Yeah, and just to add, I suppose, I mean, what Mr. Hendershot said is great, but there will be, I mean, there will be one connection on Kaufman Road from, from this, from this cul-de-sac. I mean, I understand the city stance, however, I mean, it's just not practical and we don't think it makes frankly, respectfully, a lot of sense. But thank you, and I will be here for any more questions as, as they come up and look forward to having a vote this evening. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to discontinue questions. Ms. Martin, has any public comment been submitted prior to the meeting or during the course of the meeting?
We've had, sorry, one public comment submitted prior to the meeting, which was shared with the commission in advance of the meeting. If you can proceed with your discussions, I'll double check about during the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Is anyone here from the public wanting to address the commission on this application? Why don't you come up, please state your name and address for the record? And I apologize at the clunkiness of the microphone.
Did I have to wait till the green light? Okay. Oh, yeah. Hi, everyone, my name's Andrew Denner. I live on 5240 Force One Drive, so about three houses east of Nature Drive. So it's kind of funny because I was actually here in the other building in 2014 talking, you know, about Bremley Estates because I, you know, I live in the neighborhood of Woods of Indian Run and also back up to what used to be an old horse farm. And so when I moved in, but, so I am on the Woods of Indian Run Homeowners Association, and I certainly don't speak for all of the neighbors that, all the 96 houses that live in the Woods of Indian Runs and, and some of their concerns. But in terms of the HOA, we do support the plan that they laid out, that we have met with them numerous times. They've always been, I know the last time we met in October, we talked about, you know, being proactive and working with the Woods of Indian Run since it will go through our development. And so they have answered our questions, met with us. Ideally, you know, from my point of view, I'd love the city of Dublin to keep it a green space, adopt it as a park. I understand that's not going to happen despite my requests, but if it is going to be developed, you know, if we could limit the number of houses, if we can limit the building, and that's what this plan does. I mean, in terms of continuing to build, you know, that's something that our neighbors have, you know, they express concern and some of our members express concern about keeping development and keeping that going and when will it stop within our neighborhood? Understanding that that lot at some point is going to be developed, but if it's, it's four houses now and it stopped, everyone's like, well, that's not great, but that, we're willing to take it. But then is it going to be eight? Is it going to keep going north? Is it going to keep going west there? And so we support the plan as that they presented. I will say we, there are concerns from some of our members about the blast, about how you will develop that with the bedrock. The previous owner had trouble in 2013, 2014, when they did the soil test, and that prevented the development, in my opinion, was the expensiveness to blast it. So there is concern about the, the bedrock back there. And I'm, I'm not sure when the Woods of Indian Run was developed in the 80s and late 80s, early 90s, but I mean, that Nature Drive there, that stub there, it, it did look like, if you look at the plans, it did look like it could have been like another cul-de-sac there. And so I think that bedrock and how the, how that would be blasted is, is one of the concerns that we have.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to address the commission on this application? Seeing none, we will enter into deliberation. So thank you, commission, for your attention during this item. I would like to start this evening with Mr. Supalak. Would you mind starting us off?
Yes, and forgive me, I'm going to go back to staff with a few more questions. And I'm not sure if this is Mr. Hendershot or not, but the, the storm sewer line location as it's currently laid out on their plan, is that location adjustable?
So the requirement is to provide rear yard drainage structures to make sure that there's proper drainage in rear yards, so, and maybe can we pull on the screen?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at site plan civil drawing six of 14 in particular. There's an, there's an easement with, easement with it, right? Going all the way down from the current street down to the, down to the retention pond, and I just-
Correct.
If that's, trying to understand if that's already dedicated in there, if that's, if that's subject to sort of adjustment based on-
So are you speaking towards the, the storm sewer that's basically connecting the street down to the basin?
Yes, and, and the associated easement that-
Yeah, so that will be contained within an easement if it's not being proposed currently.
But the easement and the storm, the line of it is potentially adjustable still-
Yes, yeah, that could be, absolutely, that could be adjusted.
Okay. Separate, separate question. And maybe this is, this is sort of going to go right towards a line of commentary, right? The, the crux of this discussion centers on the potential, the potential of the road. With a few sort of modifications to this plan right now, right, including, including adjustment of the, the storm line and the easement, there could be, this could be for this initial phase, the cul-de-sac, with potentially a future easement dedicated for future development, which preserves the potential, the, the city's potential for future development as, as we see fit past this location, but still allows, in large part, what, what is planned here for units, right? A little bit of, a little bit of gymnastics with the, with the lot sizes. And maybe I'm asking, that's as much a question as anything else. Could we do, have we done easements, dedicated easements for future roads or future potential-
So that would likely need to be right-of-way and not so much an easement. So are you suggesting potentially having right-of-way extend to the north property line for in the future, should redevelopment happen to the north at that time extending? I think the challenge with that is when you have a cul-de-sac proposed, it's harder to make those modifications, the, the site layouts, the lots, all of those things would need to change because, you know, that right-of-way is bulbed and now it's going to be a straight section through there. So that gets harder to try to, in reality, incorporate that type of reconfiguration.
Got it. Understood, thank you. This is not, this is not an easy, an easy conundrum for us, if I'm just jumping into my commentary, there's, this is not an easy conundrum for us, right? The, the real, the concern about connectivity, specifically fire trucks and, and service and all those types of things, how we potentially sort of block off properties so that they cannot be fully developed is always a concern, right? So I, I'll, I'll be entirely honest, I do not know where I stand. Fundamentally, on the sanitary line, I, I think it's, would be, we cannot, the city cannot move on it. We need it to be appropriate to the standard in order to potentially service future lots. There was a third, forgive me, there was a third major criteria. Do I have it in front of me? There we go, thank you, thank you. And fundamentally, I don't, I, I agree with Jamie, Mr. Chinick, on the connectivity of the path. We have the opportunity to do it. It should be, at every point, we should try and make those, those connections. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Mr. Chinick, could I have you go next?
So I, I agree with you, Mr. Supalak, it's definitely a tough, tough call. I, I fully support not, not bending on the sewer requirement, sewer death requirement. I don't, I don't know that that is negotiable personally. I, I very much appreciate hearing from the community, the neighborhood. When the neighborhood is for something, I think that's kind of why we're here, to listen. And I think we need to take that into serious consideration, that if they are for it, those are the people that we want to, you know, keep happy as well. So I, that, I appreciate you speaking up for that. That means a lot to me, to what we're debating here. And I do think that the, I, I feel very strongly that we need to have some sort of connectivity with the sidewalks or the path, bike path, making that green space a little bit more usable for the, the residents in that area. So I don't have any questions, just to save it.
Thank you, Mr. Chinick. Mr. Way.
Thank you. I actually have one quick question for staff. Can you pull up the aerial again of, that we're looking at with the floodplain? So if you scroll down to the existing development, there's a pathway, and I brought this up in a previous meeting, between 5222 and 5216, there's a path. Is that just, is that supposed to be like a little pocket park or is that a path that's supposed to be connected into something? Oh.
So it connects to the larger trail system on your screen?
Got it, that's what I was looking for, thank you. So I'll start with that because I, I brought it up at the last meeting. Again, connectivity is really important and not for, necessarily for cars. I'm going to start with people and bikes and, and we all know what a great resource Indian Run is, is it runs through the city, access along it. I think there's a tremendous opportunity to extend that pathway to the north. And I was a little bit, again, I was taken back by the overwhelming size of the stormwater management facility that, that has arisen out of all of this and how the impact that it's going to have on that creek, that, the corridor, the stream corridor. And I just think it, to me, that's not what we want to see, is take a natural resource and totally dig up along it and build additional stormwater management. I know we have to handle storm management in the right way, but I think it could be done in a much more environmentally friendly manner. And I'd like to see that path run along the creek to the north, connect to the property to the north. So that whole connectivity, the edge of Indian Run, I think is really important and this plan, as I see it now, is just kind of destroying that edge in terms of regrading and all, taking down vegetation and all of that. In terms of extending the road to the north, I think, you know, we live in a well-connected community and I, I believe that we should continue to think about connectivity, not just think about this as parcel by parcel. And to the points about reducing the curb cuts on Kaufman Road, you know, that's a busy road, kids are walking up and lo, up and down it. I think the strategy that, you know, with the thoroughfare plan is that we minimize those curb cuts and think about, again, well-planned, how do we, how do we address that issue? And I think extending Nature Drive up to the property line and allowing it connect to the property to the north, to me, is the right, is- to the property to the north, to me, is the right, is the right solution for the long term and for everybody, for the community. And again, the sanitary sewer thing, I guess I could go along with that whole point that there's only one way to do that and we need to do it right. So those would be my, kind of my three major comments.
Thank you, Mr. Way. I'll echo the challenge that the property owner has on this development and that previous property owners have had on this development, which is one of the reasons why it's still green and undeveloped. This is a challenging location, I think it becomes less challenging if additional parcels are added to it, because we can look at it as a holistic plan and implement some proper planning principles that we have spent time and effort and money on staff to pull together. I think there are some things that this development is doing right. The four lots are beautiful, the fact that they have a little bit more acreage, something that the City of Dublin misses a lot of the time. How many developments have you seen go up that have, I won't even say 10,000 square-foot lots, more like 8,000 square-foot lots recently? And so this provides something that we would like to see in the City of Dublin. It is just four lots, but it's four lots that elsewhere do not exist right now. We also have a wet basin, I agree with Mr. Way, the Riparian Corridor there, we can do a lot with that, and that would be something that I'm sure there are a couple of people on city staff who would love to partner, those are kind of the things that geek out of a few of our staff members, and so that gives us a lot of opportunity. The path connection is a big deal. We like green, we like paths in the City of Dublin. I imagine that most of you here in the audience have used one of the paths in the last week, it's been a beautiful week weather outside for walking and taking part in utilizing those paths along the City of Dublin, path planned development throughout the city. Those are all great things, and if we looked at this development through the lens of just this development, I agree, the cul-de-sac makes sense, and if we were looking at it with just Indian Run and this development, I agree, it makes sense, but the curb cuts on Dublin are the price that we would pay for the cul-de-sac, and the price that we would pay, I think, is too big of a check to write for the value that we would get out of just those four lots. In my previous existence, I was on a city council, we had a neighborhood very, very much like Indian Run, and we had a single north-south corridor, and developers came in and said, "Well, I can't develop my parcel, you know, it doesn't make sense, let us do a cul-de-sac." And prior to my term on planning and city council, we approved a lot of very nice individual developments without taking that step back and looking at the holistic plan. And that neighborhood came out in droves because they could not exit their neighborhood, they had a cul-de-sac, they had a street, they had everyone else who was exiting and taking up the right-in, right-out lane, and there was nothing we could do, all of the land was taken, all of the development had already happened, and so it was a fool us twice kind of experience. Staff tries really hard, and we rely on community participation as we put together good, proper community plans and thoroughfare plans to not just look at things through single development, single parcel, but more the holistic how we want the City of Dublin to develop. This is a challenging parcel, there is nothing that's easy about this parcel. You heard the sanitary sewer, that one's got, gravity only works one way, and if we sacrifice in some areas, none of us want to pay the price for that mistake. The street stub was stubbed on purpose, that little nature drive made no sense, I'm sure, to a lot of people who looked at it going, "Well, why on earth did we require the developer to put this in? Why on earth did we end a path with a green field after it?" Well, why on earth we do that is because we don't expect previous developers to have to pay the cost to develop an entire trail connection. We don't expect Mr. Sabatino bringing this forward to put a path all the way up to the church. We do expect them to pay for the development on their own parcel, and so that's why we do stub roads, understanding that we're planning not just individual parcels but full city. We do have fire safety ingress and egress issues, we know that we don't, we don't want extra traffic in the Indian Run neighborhood either, we don't want people cutting through a neighborhood and taking, taking their traffic off of these minor arterial roads into neighborhood roads, and so that's why we've implemented traffic calming. You've seen our lessons learned, for instance, if anyone's driven down Tara Hill, how we had to implement some traffic calming in that neighborhood because there are cuts through. And again, we learn our lessons and we try to implement that in future developments like this one. We also have the sidewalk opportunity, we don't end sidewalks, and again, we have some lessons learned in the city, if you've ever tried to walk from Giant Eagle to McDonald's, you end up on grass where there used to be a sidewalk, and we try not to duplicate those mistakes. I hope you know that we love the development. The cul-de-sac is beautiful, the four lots are amazing, the Riparian Corridor could use some extra love, but it's manicured, it's pretty, we know what to expect on this parcel, but we're not there. We like the cul-de-sac, it's not the best option. We like the large lots, they're beautiful. We understand that the sewer depth is challenging, but we like it when our toilets flush. So with that being said, I will look back to the commission for any final comments, and then we will move on, and I will entertain a motion. Any final comments from the commission? All right, I will entertain a motion.
Before you do that, I do want to confirm that we have not had any public comment during the course of the meeting. As part of your motion, I want to go through a couple of administrative items related to this case, should your motion pass. So first and foremost, we have four members this evening, in order for this to be a recommendation of approval to city council, three of four of you would need to vote in favor of the application. Should it tie to two, that would be a recommendation of disapproval to city council, or any other combination thereof. That being said, there are aspects of our subdivision regulations that do require deviation in order to facilitate even the development that's being shown today. So staff does have draft conditions, as well as an alteration to the subdivision, which were identified in your staff report, so I'm going to put those on the screen. This is what we would be asking you to make a motion to approve, should you, should you make that motion. So the first is a deviation to numeric requirements, and then conditions of approval.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Has the commission had opportunity prior to the meeting or during the meeting to review I will entertain a motion, and we'll do these individually. So case four, oh, sorry, wrong page. We will do these separately, so we have preliminary plat is the first item up. And please remember, you can make a motion, and we can get a second in order to proceed. Mr. Boggs, would you like to keep me honest here? So if a motion is made for approval, then we can proceed with the vote. Is there direction that if the commission is not supported, to make a motion of disapproval, or would you prefer the positive with the negative vote?
So as a general matter, for a body to act, it requires a motion to do something, and so a disapproval is not, really, it is a lack of a recommendation of approval. So my recommendation would be to make your motion to approve, if you want to include the conditions that Ms. Martin set forth, make that a motion to approve with the conditions presented by staff, and have a second for that.
Thank you. And then just for clarity, anyone who makes a motion or who seconds is not therefore required to vote in the affirmative, is that correct?
That is correct.
I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with conditions as set forth.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Chinak?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
And that is, yes, you wish to approve the application with conditions?
Yes, approved based on staff recommendations.
Now, for clarity, staff recommends disapproval.
Correct.
So...
Saying yes.
And a vote of yes to this motion would be a recommendation for council to approve subject to the conditions that staff has put forward. Staff's ultimate recommend, these are only presented as an alternative to staff's recommendation, which was disapproval, you do not have to follow staff's recommendation, so... I just want to, did that clarify?
Yes.
Do you wish, do you wish to keep your...
Yes, I wish to keep mine.
Okay. Mr. Supalak?
No.
Mr. Way?
No.
Ms. Call?
No. Thank you, Ms. Beal. And on the second item, this is for final plat, do we have conditions on the final plat?
It's identical to the preliminary.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve final plat?
Motion to approve the final plat with conditions.
Staff conditions.
Sorry, my mic was on.
Repeat one more time.
Motion to approve with conditions.
I have a first.
Second.
Mr. Supalak, thank you, Ms. Beal.
Ms. Call?
No.
Mr. Supalak?
No.
Mr. Way?
No.
Mr. Chinak?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Mr. Sabatino, and I apologize, I am spacing on your name, we certainly appreciate your time this evening, and we understand that this is not the answer that you wanted to hear this evening, if there are other parcels in the city that would be more amenable, or if there would be additional acquisition that would result in the type of project that you're bringing forth with an eye on future development, we would certainly invite you back. Thank you.
Thank you both.
And then, Ms. Call, if I may, procedurally, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation to city council, should the applicant elect their welcome to move forward to city council, and it would require a supermajority, so five of seven members would have to vote to approve this application.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. All right. Our next fun case this evening is case two, Neuro Transitional Rehabilitation Center at 6640 Perimeter Drive, 20-055 INF for an informal review. This application is a request for an informal review for construction of a one-story neuro transitional rehabilitation center on 1.98 acre site, zoned planned commercial district, Riverside North, subarea A1. The site is northwest at the intersection of Perimeter Drive with Hospital Drive, and Ms. Holt, welcome for our case presentation, I will turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Call, and good evening, commissioners. This site is located along Perimeter Drive, kind of between the Dublin Cancer Center and Starbucks, and just south of the Senior Star as shown on the screen here. These are the existing conditions on the site, it is flat and no tree stands, we see a key map in the center, so we're looking south, and then a view from Perimeter Drive. As mentioned, the project is within the Riverside North Planned Commercial District, or PCD. This allows most uses within the suburban office and institutional district, plus daycare and financial institutions. The site requirements are shown here on the screen, and the proposal meets all of these at this early stage. Last year, city council adopted an ordinance for specialty hospitals, and this allows for a wide range of step-down care from full-service hospitals to drug rehabilitation, on a full spectrum between those two. These uses are allowed as conditional uses within the SO district. The requirements for the specialty hospital conditional use are on the right, and I'll call attention to just a couple of them. The minimum lot size per the ordinance is three acres, this site is 1.98 acres. The site also must be 500 feet from any residential use or zone. The Senior Star at Dublin is closer than 500 feet, but per code, we consider that to be an institutional use. And then other requirements can be met or will need to be demonstrated at subsequent So tonight, the applicant is requesting specific feedback for this informal request for a neurotransitional rehabilitation center, which is post-hospital inpatient care for brain and spinal cord injuries. Patients will stay for an average of 90 days, the building is proposed to be a little over 14,000 square feet, the approximate staff number is 19, and the maximum number of patients would be 12, and as previously mentioned, the lot size is just under two acres. There are three elements in the next concurrent process, and that would consist of a final development plan, a text amendment, and then the conditional use itself. So while we're here to discuss primarily the use, of course, it helps to see the preliminary layout. So taking a look at this site plan, we see the building is parallel to and near Perimeter Drive. This area highlighted here is for patient and goods delivery. There is an existing shared access drive to the west. Parking and access is shown in the rear with 32 spaces. The dumpster location is here, and then an outdoor recreation area plus a public path is on the east side. Looking at the PCD text for this particular location, there is a requirement for fenestration and residential character for the buildings. Staff and the applicant have worked together with this application so far, there are still opportunities to improve and increase. The applicant has added dormers on the roof, and also added a stone foundation detail. We are still looking for a better port cochere or a formalized drop-off, perhaps in the center of the backside of the building. Moving on, the west side windows have been emphasized a bit more by the applicant. On the east side, staff believes that this area could still be stretched so that this recreation area has greater visual and physical access to the outdoor recreation area. And then again, the drop-off location could be made more prominent and provide a real protected area for especially patient drop-off. Discussion questions are before you tonight, and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. Looking to the commission for questions for staff. Mr. Way?
Thank you. Are there any other medical facilities in this area that have beds, or is this the first one? I mean, I've been in just about every building there, and they're all outpatient, for one reason or other.
Is it Dublin Springs that's a little bit farther to the west that I believe has been... beds?
It does. Okay. And what type of facility is that?
Yeah, that's correct. So originally developed as Dublin Springs, today it's Columbus Springs. They have inpatient residential care for a variety of drug and rehabilitative services, often court-ordered.
Where is that specifically?
So it is on the... I guess you would call that the southwest side of Perimeter Drive.
But is it in the super block, if I can call it the super block? It's not, right?
It's not on the north side. So you can... In the lower left-hand corner of the screen, you can see the circle.
Okay. And I had one other really minor question, but in the staff report, it talks about the dumpster being next to the outdoor area. But we have a drawing in our packet that shows the trash being moved out to the outer edge. And it has the same date as the one before. Is that the most current plan? It's on page six of seven?
I'll let the applicant address that.
Okay. I didn't know if they had already responded to your comment and updated the drawing. So that was kind of the question, is have the drawings been updated? That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Other questions for staff? Mr. Chanak?
Thank you. Can you talk a little about your comments on the drop-off? Are you suggesting they move the drop-off to the center for stacking purposes, or what's the reasoning behind that recommendation?
The reasoning behind that idea is multifold. First of all, we have the requirement by the PCD text to have a lot of fenestration. Coins, windows, overhangs, dormers, those kinds of architectural elements are mentioned. Secondly, if we look at the function of the site... If a patient was being dropped off in the location that is currently shown with this single point of access, you would have an ambulance, or some kind of medical transport service that would need to back into the area that is being shown. That blocks access for the rest of the parking lot, and the entire parking lot. And it's also... I can't think of a better way to describe it, but it's a little bit of an unceremonious delivery for those patients. A port cochere that would have protection from wind, rain, snow, as you're gathering various medical equipment for the patient, and maybe taking a bit of time to get that person indoors would be very welcome.
One follow-up question, too. And then, your comments on the northeast, I guess it's the perspective on sheet 1 of 7, you mentioned increasing that... I guess I wasn't following your comment. Was increasing the size of that, or increasing the glazing in that space?
The concept here is, if you look at the plan view, this area is the recreation area that is adjacent to that outdoor space. And yet, there is no direct access from that room to the outdoor space. If the building, and especially that particular wing, I'll call it, that windowed area, was stretched out, you could have direct visual and physical access to that recreation area. And the importance of being able to see greenery and easily access that area is paramount.
So increasing the square footage to accommodate that?
I would not say that that is a requirement. I think the architects could figure out how to do that without necessarily increasing the square footage of the building. It is a little bit of a rearrangement of the puzzle pieces.
Thank you.
Help me understand the use here from our perspective. Obviously, we... Not terribly long ago, we beat up the code on this specialty hospital. If we grant this, right, if we grant this, and select medical wants to move out, another specialty hospital can move in without coming back to us. The use sticks with the property.
That is correct, and that is the exact point behind the second half of question number two, is would the commission limit a specialty hospital here to only brain and spine injuries because of the lot size?
If I could phrase, because this is an informal review, really what we're looking at is, are we accepting of a text modification? Are we accepting of the conditional use in this area? Are we willing to, you know, waive the three-acre requirement and allow something on two acres? You know, I like to give the Duplo blocks versus Lego blocks. Final development plan is the Lego blocks, the preliminary is the Duplo blocks. We're at the conceptual... We're sitting down with a crayon at this point in time. Do we think that this is a proper use? Are we willing to entertain the 1.98 acre size versus the limit... Sorry, the smallest that we put, it must exceed three acres in the code. And so, you know, again, if we're sitting down with that crayon, are we... Could we be acceptable... Accepting of the text modification, the waiver of the three acres, and ultimately the conditional use in this area? Any other questions? All right. Any other questions from the commission? Is the applicant here, or would you like to make a presentation this evening? Hello and welcome. And I apologize for the clunkiness, but if we could have you use the handheld microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Joe Walker. I'm with EMH&amp;T, Site Civil Engineer, 5500 New Albany Road, Columbus, Ohio. Long story short, I just want to address two topics, and then welcome the team here, introduce the team. The one topic, Commissioner Kim, I believe you commented on, we did actually update the site plan, and the printout that you have sounds like it is current. Sarah, I think you did a great presentation. The one side of the site layout plan, we shifted the dumpster location and shuffled some things around. We also illustrated that our fire truck can make all the turning movements within the parking lot. So I believe, Commissioners, I believe you all have that more recent copy. The architecture components were updated per majority of the staff comments, minus the port cochere comment, and I think I'll let Nick or one of the folks behind me speak on behalf of the architects, or Nick or Alan. But I think just mainly wanted to point out that per the commission, the codes that were shown on the screen earlier for the PCC, the square footage of the building size here is on the much smaller end of the spectrum, right? The minimum being 9,500, the maximum being 50,000 square-foot building. This building is only about 14,400 square feet, so just wanted to highlight that the site is two-thirds, but the building is actually, you know, far less than what could be shown on this property. Just to help you understand the density. The code allows us to put a 70% density of kind of impervious area on the site, and as shown in our site plan, we're only at about 37% to 38% right now. So it's a very green site still by the time we're done, based on the site plan you're looking at here tonight. And I think I just wanted to pass along to Alan, maybe to speak about architecture.
Good evening. I'm Alan New with the GWG3 Architects in North Little Rock, Arkansas, 600 Main Street, Suite 300, 72114. Amazing forum you have here. I'm really honored to be here. You guys do a great job here. But address, we did make the adjustments to the site per staff recommendations. We've provided secondary entrances to the building through our courtyard, that's off of our landscape courtyard that's enclosed, so we don't have all of our deliveries coming in the front door. And this was in direct response to comments and conversations we've had with you. We have made adjustments to the elevations. We think that a lot of the comments are very doable. Not going to address the coins now, maybe that's a discussion we can have, but I think that we're moving in the right direction. The building is actually 13,500 square feet, rather than 14,500 square feet, so it is considerably, well, 1,000 square foot smaller than what we've been talking about this evening. The port cochere has been... It's kind of been... We've been talking about that during this process, while I understand that cost is not an issue in these discussions. We've made a lot of concessions from our prototypical-type building, and the port cochere is kind of... It's awkward. If we could pull the site up, if I may address that site plan? And this is fluid. We're working with crayons here. We totally agree with what you said. We're here to adapt and adjust, and make this project successful, and a great asset to your community. But by... And actually, this is a really old site plan, because it doesn't really show the connectivity to the road to the left. And actually, on your website, you have the original, you have the new updated site plan shown. You have two web addresses, and this building does address... In the lower-left corner of the building, as it's elongation along Perimeter Drive, there was a storage room there that we have moved to the back of the building, reconfigured the format of the floor plan, to really accommodate some of those, address those issues of how we can make this building a better neighbor and get more glass that embraces the street. So the elevations and the renderings are correct. Again, the plan is incorrect, and we have moved the trash enclosure to the plan northeast, to facilitate those comments. Great comments, by the way. The port cochere, it's doable. It's just it's an odd angle. We are limited in our access. We really wanted to limit accessibility to the site, and it's something that we will definitely explore and present options to you with that. But again, it's something we've kind of pulled back with. So, you know, just be patient with us, and we'll work with you on some of the things that you presented. The room sizes, the resident room sizes are 330 square foot. They're spacious. Our dayrooms are 1,200 square foot, our therapy gyms, and our about 1,200 square foot as well. And so, the proportion of those, as we have shown now, work well for us in our prototypical situation. So to elongate those things, we can explore, but we have certain types of devices that help facilitate the residents' rehabilitation, and the placement of the sofa, and the TVs, and their dining rooms. These folks cook their own food, so it's more of a... Not really a hospital. It's kind of more of a frat house, in a way, if I use a term. But it's... These are people that are commuting, and they're all commuting to get better. Any questions?
So looking to the commission for questions, and this will be specifically for the applicant. Mr. Way, I see it's itching to push that button.
So could you just talk a little bit about the number of beds you have? Is that a fixed model that you have? Does it ever grow? Do you ever look to expand, or?
I'm going to let Nick or Scott handle this question.
And my name's Scott Keen. Business address 4714 Gettysburg Road, Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, My title is the Vice President of Operations for Neuro Transitional Rehab. I actually had the honor of being an interim CEO with Ohio Health. That's our partner in this endeavor. So it's something that's been needed in many states, and we've stepped into this line of business with our partnerships, because many, many community residents right now have to travel as far as Pittsburgh to get this level of care. We keep it small and intimate, anywhere from nine to 15 beds, because of the types of patients that we're caring for and we're seeing. So it's not... We wouldn't look to expand this site. What we would do is, if the community needed it, we would build another one somewhere else. And we focus on the brain injury and spinal cord injury, and ensure their ability to stay in the community that their loved ones are in.
Mr. Way? Ms. Beal?
So, and I just wanted... The gentleman said before you was quite interesting. This is... It's like a frat house. No. It's... So these aren't like patients in bed that are really immobile, and have, you know, they get full nursing care. They're actually, they take care of themselves, and they are mobile, and could you talk a little bit more about that?
That's the miracles that happen inside. A lot of these patients are severe brain injuries and spinal cord injuries. So when they get to us after people know acute rehabilitation, but often a brain injury or spinal cord injury takes a lot longer to heal and recover. So we've done these in Texas. We're looking in multiple states, and the one in Texas has actually gotten 100% of the patients home. These are patients that, without this level of care, wind up in long-term care. So when they do come to us, they could be a max assist, absolutely. But they're at the level where they're medically stable. So we partner with Ohio Health for their neurological appointments, their needs, but when they're with us, they're stable, but they need a lot of help to get home.
I was wondering if they had already gone through a certain level of care where they could start, they were mobile, and they could take care of...
So they usually have had acute rehabilitation before us.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? Sorry. So when they're there, they stay there. They're not in and out... I mean, obviously, when they recover, but they're there on-site. They wouldn't leave the site and come back and stay?
So they are residents of the site. So along with being successful of getting somebody home, we do community outings, we do activities, but they are staying on-site. And it's an average of 90 days. Also, looking at the turnover, you're looking at three or four new patients a month. It's not a fast turnover. This is a specific patient that, without this, will wind up in long-term care.
Mr. Supalak, you had a question?
Yeah. Scott, forgive me. I know you just touched on it. I just want to maybe have you unpack it a little bit more. I heard nine to 15 is the standard for all your facilities. Is the scale of this building comparable to... The footprint, not just the number of rooms, but the footprint of the building comparable to all the other facilities you have?
Yes. So we work with Alan on all the facilities that we're designing. So our 12-bed design, which this is, runs between 13,000 and 14,000 square feet, so that is our typical design.
And how many of these facilities do you have?
So we have one up and running in Texas. We have a second one we're building in Texas, and then we're partnering with multiple states to bring them out across. Behind me, the experience level, the person who works with me has over 25 years of experience in this level of care, and has helped write brain injury laws, et cetera. So we pulled in a lot of expertise to make this happen right.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Way, I thought you had another question.
I have some detailed ones. This is probably more for engineering than it is anybody else. But the front of the building, between Perimeter Drive and the building, shows a ton of utilities running through it. Are those... Those are existing, and are they limiting in terms of what you could do in terms of landscape?
Not that I'm aware of, no. We've researched and obviously fully surveyed the sites. We do anticipate needing to put some street trees out front. The depths of the majority of the utilities have actually been surveyed. We oops marked and did an SUE. Majority of those were under four feet deep. So we do have a pretty good feel. We have to obviously finalize the site grading. We do anticipate a small stormwater feature near the northeast corner of the site. There's actually an existing basin north of that existing parking lot over there. This site is tributary 2, and this site was regionally planned for this lot. We do need to evaluate the current stormwater regulations, and just make sure we're meeting all the current EPA water quality requirements between downstream and upstream. We have not engineered that yet, but we understand also the screening requirements, you know, as well as the landscape requirements the city of Dublin has. Actually, did the design for this expansion of this building about three years ago, so long story short, we're familiar with Dublin, and happy to comply with the standards. We're not seeking any variances that we're aware of, at least at this time.
So you answered my second question, the land to the north. You know, it just kind of looks leftover right now. So there is a need for some type of stormwater?
We will likely put a basin in that northeast corner. It may be more of a water quality feature than a detention basin, because of how this area is master-planned.
We'll come back to that.
Perfect. Sounds great.
All right. Other questions from the commission for the applicant at this time? Mr. Chanak? Mr. Chinak?
I'm sorry. One quick follow-up question. Is there an opportunity, I know you, you mentioned that it's a smaller facility, is there an opportunity to have less beds and reduce the square footage at all in this location?
There's always an opportunity. I think nine would be the minimum of what you could do and be functional operationally. So there is those opportunities. When we work with Ohio Health, looking at the healthcare data in the market area though, we see the need for probably more than 12. So, and 12 is the most functional for these patients, to be honest with you. That's what we usually stick with. But we can, nine's possible.
I just want to go back to staff for a question. Dublin doesn't have a lot of empty land. Are there other areas in the city where there would exist a three-acre parcel to do a specialty hospital where either the land use allows for or has equal conditional use need?
We would have to take a look at that. That isn't something that I could answer off the top of my head.
Didn't expect it, but, you know, always hoping. Thank you, Ms. Holt. Mr. Way?
I just want to address, I wanted to build off that question and this is kind of, so your, your relationship is with Ohio Health?
Yes.
And they have a hospital directly across the street?
So Select Medical is a national corporation. We do, we do acute rehabilitation, critical illness hospitals, outpatient workers comp. And with Ohio Health, we do, we do acute rehabilitation for Ohio Health. So they're our majority partner.
So is there, just, is there any special relationship distance-wise between the hospital and your facility or there isn't really, it's nice to be close, but it doesn't have to be close?
There's a, there's a good value to being within close proximity because these patients, although they're medically stable, need a lot of appointments. So working with the partnership is important.
Okay. Thank you.
I was thinking about that future expansion area that we've seen recently. All right. Any other questions for the applicant or for staff at this time? Thank you. At this time, I'll turn the time over to the commission for deliberation. Again, I want to reiterate, we are looking at informal review. Ms. Holt, thank you for presenting the items that we are asked to discuss this evening. So the first one, are we supportive of this type of use, the conditional use of a specialty hospital in this particular location? If so, are we supportive of not holding to the three-acre requirement that we previously recommended City Council pass for the code? Number three, conceptual, again, we're at concept plan, so crayons, not even Duplo blocks at this point, conceptual layout of the project, understanding that they are still working with staff on some of the, I wouldn't even just say minor, but major and minor details. And then architecture or any other commissions considered by the commission. So with that being said, Mr. Way, if I could have you start us off this evening.
Thank you. So I totally get the rationale for this facility and again, I think facilities like this are in need and popping up all over the place. So, you know, the nature of this district and its proximity to the hospital, I think there's, there's rationale for it. I would be supportive of limiting it or making this not just a blank, you know, we've opened up the door. You know, like it, the three acres, I think, is still a good number and maybe that's just a variance in this case. And limiting it to brain and spine, I don't know if we could, if there's a way to, I don't know how loose we can be with that or how specific, so it's not just carte blanche. But that would be a comment of mine.
We can certainly investigate whether there's a way to provide some limitation with respect to user or, or otherwise.
So anyway, I would support, again, the use in general with maybe some caveats on it. In terms of the conceptual layout, this, this super block is, I call it the super block, is really interesting in the way that it's been planned and it's evolved and it's like this, you know, it's not like a district where buildings are at streets and, you know, parking's behind, it's kind of this mixture of things. And so there's some buildings that are, have come up to the street and some that are, aren't. And so I think this kind of reinforces that pattern a little bit. So the idea of pulling the building up to the street, I think, is the right move in putting the parking behind. I do believe though, that then the building has an obligation to be part of the street and I think architecturally right now, it's looking still like the back of a building. So I think there's probably some architectural things that could be done, especially window size, but I know those are bedrooms and I think that, I understand where you're going with that. But I would like to see that facade along the street look more like it's a building fronting the street. And where I was going with the utility in the front is, you know, that front door could actually be heavily handled with landscape to make it feel like it's a, something that is part of the building and it's fronting the street. So I would urge you to really look, from a landscape standpoint, look at that front yard, if you will, and how that could almost set it up to look like it's the front of the building without, I know there's not an entrance there because you obviously can't do that. And then the back of the lot, which we just talked about, I think there's a wonderful opportunity to build off of the shared-use path that runs along the side of it, to build something that could be great for patients to go out and follow that path down and find this little, you know, garden. I know it's surrounded by parking, but, you know, do something really attractive there that makes that part of the experience. So I'd like to, again, the site, I mean, you know, we're not reviewing that tonight, we're not reviewing landscape, but I think the site can really help to knit this project into that very, I don't know, weird conglomeration of lots and buildings. I think I'm going to let the architects talk about architecture, but I totally agree with staff that there's a lot of finesse to the details, especially that facade on the, on the street that I think needs some help. And again, just in general, and I think the Portico share could be worked out. In fact, your new site plan, I was just looking at it, it could be this cool thing that comes out and just kinks a little bit and kind of becomes a very special part of the project. So I think, I think staff's on to something with that. That's all I got.
And I neglected to ask if any additional public comment has come in during the course. Thank you. Mr. Chinak?
I had very similar comments, so I don't necessarily have anything new to add. I, I'm generally supportive of it. I fully agree with the architectural comments. I think we can do a little bit more to make that street frontage a little more impactful. And I did have some similar comments on the landscaping and maybe even to the extent of a little more separation from that, it's a public path there. So maybe there's some landscaping that we could, could add in there. I know that's getting a little more granular than we are today, but in general, I am, I am supportive of it and I think it's, it's great what you guys are, what you guys are doing here for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chinak. Mr. Suplack?
I'm going to fundamentally concur with my fellow commissioners, right? The hard thing for us, for the specialty hospital, is that a specialty hospital encompasses a wide array of hospitals. So we have to build said standards to protect, right, against, I'm going to say, the least common denominator, worst-case scenario type of thing. You guys are not, are not that. So I could be in favor of relaxing certain provisions of that criteria if we could lock in, lock in sort of a stipulation in one way, shape or form that doesn't allow the, another hospital type to move, another specialty hospital type to potentially move into this space in the future. So that tether, I think, is, is going to be critical in this. Conceptual support for the layout, yes. I agree with Mr. Way. The building's a nice, nice building, generally. You guys are going down the right paths. Is there some detail, detail work that, that could come a little more alive? Yes, but it's, it's early. It's, you know, everything, I think, staff was sort of alluding to the potential for, I don't know, I don't remember everything. There was coining potentially at corners. I'm sure, you know, brick, brick courses that are sort of compelling in all of this. Mr. Way, I think, is spot-on in right now, the, is it the south wall? Looks like it is pretty, pretty solid and closed, right? Landscaping will help that quite a bit, but if we could sort of address that so it doesn't feel so, so closed on that side, I think it, I think it will be a productive, productive nuance to be sensitive to. And I think the rest of the site will come alive when it gets to the point that you're really meshing all the landscaping into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. I also agree that the building blocks, you know, we're, we're looking at good building blocks here. I have complete faith that, working with staff, you will get with the architectural details that would be needed to come into the city of Dublin. The one hangup that I have is the overnight stay in a medical plaza. I look at that entire block and we don't really have overnight stays in that area. So looking at this from a planning perspective, from a public safety response, obviously, you know, we want to make sure that your parcel is as protected as any of the other surrounding parcels and understanding how public safety needs to change for a neighborhood that is not occupied during the night versus a neighborhood that has at least one occupant that is occupied at night. I could, looking at the size of the lot, holding 14, excuse me, 13,500 square foot building to a three-acre minimum, I agree is probably not necessary. My hangup is the overnight stay in an area where we haven't had overnight stays. So tonight, we are just looking at informal review. I broached the question with, hey, are there other areas? I'm remembering the, the part of Highland Glen that we saw that had the front portion and that was more populated 24 hours of the day. I'm thinking to the other side of the freeway with the hospital, again, more populated, more populated even later in the night. We are missing quite a few commission members and so I wish you could hear their voices also so that you could get a feel during the informal review of the Planning and Zoning Commission's ultimate, you know, feel for this type of application. Seeing as this is an informal review and you're seeking information from the commission, we'd like to invite you up to see if you have any questions for us this evening or if you've heard the direction that you were looking to hear. A thumbs up or a thumbs down suffices too. All right. Well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. We do not have a motion on this particular item. So if you have further questions, please, we direct you to staff. They're very good at getting ahold of us when they need us and, and we certainly look forward. The type of use, you see the city of Dublin and someone commented on, wouldn't it be nice if those who unfortunately suffer these types of events can be closer to their loved ones, closer to home? And so we certainly thank you for bringing this type of use to the city of Dublin, something that we haven't had previously. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Mullenax, how are you? And I didn't even mistake you for anyone else this evening. How are you doing?
I'm good. Thank you.
At this time, we will be moving on to item number three, veterinary emergency group at 3800 Tuller Road, 22-056 WR waiver review. This application is a request for a waiver to reduce required street-facing transparency along Tuller Road. The 1.87 acre site is Zoned Bridge Street District Sawmill City, Sawmill Center Neighborhood and is located northeast of the intersection of Tuller Road with Dublin Center Drive. So Ms. Mullenax, I will turn the time over to you. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening. This is a request for review and approval of a waiver to reduce the required street-facing transparency at 3800 Tuller Road for an animal hospital. The 1.87 acre site is highlighted here in yellow and is Zoned Bridge Street District Sawmill Center Neighborhood. The veterinary emergency group is located northeast of the intersection of Tuller Road and Dublin Center Drive. The 6,100 square foot building was previously used as a chase bank. Earlier this year, the administrative review team approved a minor project for exterior modifications for a veterinary hospital, which included the removal of a drive-through canopy as well as some other associated features. The existing building resembles a commercial center building type, which determines the facade transparency requirements. Modifications of existing structures are permitted, provided that the improvements bring the building closer to compliance with the requirements of the Bridge Street District Code. The applicant is proposing to reduce the transparency on the west elevation facing Tuller Road, which is shown here on the site plan in red. These are the existing conditions of the west elevation facing Tuller Road. The commercial center building type requires minimum transparency of 65% on any ground stories, street facing a facade. The existing conditions indicate 44% transparency and is therefore already deficient. Any additional reductions to this requirement will require a waiver. The applicant is proposing a transparency of 29%, which is shown here in blue, and a white opaque window film added to the inside of the windows is shown here in orange. The applicant is requesting the waiver for the window film to provide additional shade for the animals and prevent them from any overheating or becoming ill. Staff is supportive of the waiver since there are instances where the commission has previously approved window film within the Bridge Street District and this is a unique site for this particular use. The window film is not a permanent material and it could be removed if a new tenant were to occupy the space in the future. Furthermore, the reduction in transparency is facing Tuller Road and not Sawmill Road. So Tuller Road is a neighborhood street, which diminishes the impact of the character to the district as a whole. The waiver, waiver review criteria is either met or not applicable. And lastly, planning recommends approval of the waiver request with no conditions. The applicant is in attendance this evening and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullenax. Any questions from the commission? Did the applicant wish to make a presentation or a statement this evening? Perfect. All right. Looking to the commission for questions and/or discussion.
I just had a quick question for the applicant. Is, is there an opportunity, which I'm sure you've explored it, to do shades or some other type of protection, sun, sun protection from the animals?
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ashley Schultz. Business address for veterinary emergency group, it's at 44 South Broadway, Lower Level Three in White Plains, New York. I'm the director of design at VEG and so spearheading a lot of these types of questions when it comes to the design of our spaces. What, what's happening in this case is that there are actual animal housing cages pushed up against the glass. And so shades would, would help, but they're not going to provide that full block of the solar heat gain that we're going to receive from that window. So the goal here is that we, we actually would build a wall in front of the windows because we need to, one, have something physical for those cages to back up to. Two, we run medical gas through that wall to supply oxygen to those cages when needed for the patients. And so then the film is there as part of that whole assembly to allow us to be able to provide the appropriate operational needs within those specific areas of the facility.
Oh, you're probably going to ask the question I'm going to ask. So, Mr. Way, you go right ahead.
Now you put me on the spot because I may not. So I, I get, I get the whole thing, right? I understand it, but I'm just trying to understand that you've got this big wall of glass, but you're only treating part of it. Isn't light still coming in from the upper part and causing heat load and all that?
There, there would be a ceiling. So we've designed it such that the room has a ceiling that would hit the molyan, the horizontal molyan, and that light coming in above would be coming over top and not, not causing solar heat gain within the, the room that the animals are in.
So, absolutely. Warren's not here tonight. Warren's not here tonight. I get that because you need to push the cages up against something. So is the opaque film then hiding the wall more than it's doing anything?
It is more so than anything because otherwise you see the backside of the wall. It's really hard to build a wall uptight against glass and finish the backside of it. You have to like build it on the floor and then tip it up if you're going to have finished nice-looking drywall against the glass, right? So more than anything, it's to make it more aesthetically pleasing than seeing a wall pushed up against that glass.
I have a follow-up to that, too. So then the film stops, doesn't go all the way to the ground? Is that how we're reading this?
It does go all the way to the ground. My understanding, and the planners can speak to this, is that the code is explicitly concerned about the area from two feet to eight feet above the floor.
Any other questions?
Actually, another question for staff. Do they meet the transparency requirements on Sawmill roadside?
So facade transparency is on all sides of the building, but because they are only adding the film to the west side, we would just be taking that two to eight feet measurement. Hopefully, that answers your question.
I was just wondering if the transparency on the other sides of the building is less than required. It sounds like it probably is already.
There's a difference between a non-street facade versus a street-facing facade. Correct.
But the entire building is deficient because it predates 2012.
Yes, Mr. Way.
So Ms. Mullenax, I have another question. Can you pull up the existing photos of the facade? So there is not a door in there, is that correct?
That is correct. The door is a new addition. It will not have film on it.
On the, on our, we have other images of where you've done this before. You provided us with pictures of where it's been applied. I just wonder, instead of it, I know the band is the first step of taking it to that white band, right? I think that's what you're trying to do. But if you took it all the way up for those two panels that are on the right, that would achieve the same thing, and then it would have, there would be a kind of an aesthetic thing that it's kind of, and even if you did some graphics on it, or like you showed in the images you sent us, it was basically, and maybe you can't do that because it's designed. I was thinking of a graphic or something that tastes full, but anyway, forget that. Just, I was just thinking, if you took it all the way up, that it might then look like those panels are different than the other two panels, and it might look like it fits in better, but I'm getting over my skis.
And it's not even that late. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Okay, looked at the commission for discussion. So we have been asked for a waiver to reduce the required street-facing transparency, understanding that the building is currently deficient, came in under previous requirements. This is a request to decrease with special circumstance based on the use. Mr. Chinak, you want to start us off?
I have no further questions or comments.
We're just looking for discussion.
Yeah.
If you're supportive of.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm supportive of the request.
Mr. Way.
I am definitely, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I'm sorry. I would say I'm supportive of the request as long as we can kind of tie it to this particular use. So if another, like again, as previous comments, if another tenant comes in or they make a change, that we require that to be moved, removed, the film, if that's possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chinak. Mr. Way.
Again, I support what's trying to be achieved. And again, I just worry that putting the film halfway across this glass facade and not all the way up is just going to make it look, I don't know how, I can't visualize how that's going to look. It might just, it might be fine, but if you took it all the way up, then it would have some rationale. And I guess that would be my only comment.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Mr. Sue Black.
I happen, maybe this is a separate question. Are the signs there? Are the signs approved? No.
No. So the images that were provided as part of your packet are just an example of what they have done, showing this proposed film at another location.
And I guess I'm asking about the signs across the top of the building right now.
The signs will come through with a different application.
Okay.
Yep.
The struggle is real on this one, right? It's not, where I'm going, and I think where Mr. Way was going, is if we have to do this, it'd be lovely if it was designful, right? Intentional with the total, right, what's there. I could wrap my head around it. The way it is right now, unfortunately, it's kind of just a matter of fact, right? This is where we need it, and this is where it is. So it doesn't, it doesn't, it's a remnant, this vestige of what's going on on the inside. It's not necessarily as designful. And I think you've done a good job, actually, in some of your other images of making it designful, integrating it with potentially some of the signage that you might otherwise be doing, right? It comes across as just a translucent frosted kind of quality. And so I think that's where this needs to go in order to be agreeable, is what it comes down to.
Thank you, Mr. Sue Black. I understand the challenge. I owned a store, and I didn't have animals behind the windows. I had people behind the windows, and we cooked. But there were some creative solutions for us, so we ended up applying a film that was still transparent, but reduced the heat, and it did it with micro dots. And it was pleasant working at the cash register rather than, you know, sorry, who's going to lose it, you know, rock, paper, scissors? I'm actually more concerned about a solid wall behind a window than I am about a film. I think we ought to be very careful with film, especially if we're integrating graphics and look at that holistically as part of a sign package, rather than just design elements in a waiver to meet the needs of the particular use, in this case, the health and well-being of animals. I'm struggling a little bit with this one. I understand the challenge. I understand. We need to remember that the current reduction that is experienced, you know, that was presented, the 44% or whatever, was because it came in under different standards previously, so it was not that they were granted a waiver, and now we're granting a waiver on top of a waiver, but rather the history of the particular applications. I think there are some creative ways to solve it. I just don't see them in this particular request.
Can I clarify? I have a question. Is it, we're not talking, there's no graphics on this. It's just a, it's a white film, correct?
That's correct.
And the graphics would go headlong, right at a signage package, right? But even in, I think, what you're articulating, Rebecca, right, there are designful, creative solutions. That's not what this is. This is.
This is opaqueness on top of a window that is going to be fronting a blank wall. And I struggle with the combination of those items, especially considering this is not facing a parking lot, this is facing a street.
And I know we're not supposed to get in design, but would it be better if it extended all the way across the whole length of the windows?
It currently is posed that way. So it's the detail here that is the exception.
I was saying if it would extend all, like, it stops halfway if the film would extend all the way across the length of the.
So this is the exception. No, this is the, they're pointing out the exception from what I understood, not, it's only going to be in this little section.
The crosshatch is the opaque film.
Right. So the blue, I was saying if the, I was asking the commission if it were to extend where the blue area is, would that make it more architecturally?
I would look to staff for discussion there.
So the extension of the opaque film would further reduce the transparency because it's measured from the two to eight feet for a storefront. So here, they are showing in the image, the opaque film as shown with the crosshatching in the orange area, whereas the blue is showing the transparent area within that two to eight feet within the storefront. So hopefully, that provides a little bit more clarity.
I mean, I guess the only additional information I would provide, and likely the reason that this is such a challenging conversation, right, is that this property is located within the Bridge Street District, and the intent is to create active and engaging storefronts. And, you know, from time to time, particularly when uses go into existing structures, those uses may be more interior, interiorly oriented than uses that would go into new structures. So, you know, I think as we talk about graphics and being architecturally integrated, at the end of the day, minimizing window film to the greatest extent possible, so I wouldn't encourage us to increase the amount of window film for the sake of architecture. In terms of graphics, there's certainly an opportunity to do that. The commission has considered that in other cases before. In those cases, the applicant brought that graphic back to the commission, and it was approved as part of the waiver. If it was not a sign, and so emphasis on graphic, if this does become part of a larger sign package that is reflective of the branding, most likely that would require a master sign plan, which would also come back to you. I anticipate that most folks in the Bridge Street District prefer to do signs that meet the zoning code so that they can get those approved at the administrative review team level. So really, there are two courses of action. There's, right, if you wanted to bring it back with a graphic, you could table the waiver, and the applicant could revise their plans, graphic, not a sign. If they wanted to bring it back with a sign plan, they could do that as well, or you could approve it as proposed this evening with some additional conditions relative to only this user.
Or only this.
When you are articulating graphic, and I'm going back to, right, the images they have, would you, would we interpret, I don't know if you can pull it up, they have the one where, yep, that one on the left, specifically the paw print and the element, would that qualify as a graphic?
No.
Sign.
Yes, that's a sign or a corporate logo.
Got it.
So a graphic would be something related to the business that is not related to the corporate brand, if that makes sense. So it would need to be something of movement.
Just the paw print.
No.
No. And really, where I struggle is, we have, you know, same kind of issue when we are looking at, what's the exercise, the gym there on Riverside that has windows that face the park, and they get the sun in the afternoon, and they are transparent. And, you know, there are people behind those areas, those windows, and in this case, there would be people and animals behind those windows. We found creative ways, and we found ways to make sure that there's no negative impact, whether that's through air conditioning or, I think right now, I am uncomfortable with the waiver as it is. And so, looking back to, we went through the commission for discussion. Are there any other items of discussion? Otherwise, I'd like to present a couple of paths forward.
Yes. One question. Recognizing, obviously, that you want to maximize every square inch you can, right? Could this wall that's inside, could it be set back 12 inches?
The way the plans are currently laid out, that would reduce the room size to be non-code compliant from a, like, ADA accessibility standpoint.
Got it.
So that would not be preferred.
Got it. And where I was going was, even just doing that starts to create, one, it starts to create a little bit of a shadow box. You can potentially finish it. You can do something interesting with it. It doesn't, you know what I mean? It averts some of this conversation, but understood.
If I may also add, just as part of your conversation, is that our true signage package, which is a separate submittal, does include something similar along this facade to what you're seeing in these images. So I will just add that to the conversation.
Got it. So again, Ms. Martin, if you could add some clarity, in previous cases where we have, as a commission, approved either a waiver or a package that allows for graphics included in the approval, is that brought as part of the waiver? So this particular item that we're seeing today, we would have seen with a graphic included and discussed that together holistically?
If it's a graphic and not a sign.
Correct. Graphic specifically.
Yes. So other applicants have justified their waivers for window film by making them some sort of place-making element or architectural feature, you know, whether that's playing off the window mullions or however that works. Yes, people have integrated them in creative ways and used that as a justification.
Is there anything that would preclude us from seeing, it sounds like they already have a sign package in the works, from seeing, other than timing, from seeing a waiver for transparency at the same time we saw a sign package?
No, there would be nothing that would preclude you. The applicant would either have to elect to bring their signs to you voluntarily, or they would have to be proposing something, like, the graphic that's on this window probably exceeds what our code would permit. So if this is really what they wanted, they would have to come before you, and that would have to be reviewed as a master sign plan or a deviation. So if this is what they're proposing, then they'll be back before you anyway. If they're going to meet code, then they would have to be electing to bring that to you.
Looking at the size of the graphics on the building, I think that that would necessitate a sign plan also. So looking to the applicant commission, if you're not supportive, feel free to correct me, but would you like to, understanding the direction and the discussion of the commission tonight, would you like to table this particular item and bring it back with the graphic incorporation or alongside a sign package in the future?
Yes, if we feel like that would be beneficial to the final decision, we'd be willing to do that.
So that's completely entirely up to you.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then I, we don't do tables very often, so the applicant has elected to table this item for this evening. Do I need?
So you'll need a motion to.
A motion to table.
Quick question, Nicole. What qualifies as an art sign? What are the stipulations there?
So a place-making art sign is not a sign that is identified in the sign code. That is something that was identified as part of Crawford Hoynes' master sign plan. So we do have precedent and parameters that we could use, and I guess guidelines that the applicant could turn to for what other applicants have done. But that would be the master sign plan, to request a sign that is that, because it's out of the box. That is something that the commission would have to make a determination on.
Doing it. Thank you.
All right. So I am.
Sorry, can I have one quick comment? Sorry. For the applicant, I think, just I want to be clear and fair to the applicant, because I think coming back with a graphic or signage as part of this submission doesn't necessarily, I think we still need to be clear with you that we're not in the same favor of the wall and blocking off that window with a wall. So if there's an opportunity for you to kind of relook at the plan, I think, from my perspective, I think we would encourage that, to kind of rethink the plan if we can avoid blocking off that window.
So I would just direct you to staff. Staff understands what we look for. They can also. They can also give you documentation of what has passed before. So I would encourage you to work with staff for that resubmittal. We have a request to table. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to table.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Ms. Beal.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Suplack.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Mr. Chinok.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Our final case this evening was postponed, and so we are on to, I apologize. I'm moving on already. So we certainly look forward, this is kind of an interesting building, having the history that it has. So we're, we're grateful to see a different type of use and active use in this particular location. And of course, the, the service that it provides to the community is not unappreciated. So thank you very much, and thank you for your time this evening. All right, we are on to communications. Ms. Martin, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do. One of the items that the planning division has been talking with some of our commission members about is doing a tour of previously approved developments. Planning staff has been trying to balance schedules and the flow of development applications that we have. And so we have tentatively been holding your meeting date of June 16th to do that tour. That could potentially still change, just given that we had three cases postponed this evening, and we had a whole full list already. So, but I do want to get some input on what developments you would like to see. My preference would be that these would be things that have been before the commission in the last five years or so. That way, we can pull the history, see the conversation, talk through what works, what doesn't work, that sort of thing.
Good examples or bad examples?
Both.
Both. I would challenge, I'd also like to see at least one, maybe a couple of the old ones. One of the, one of the challenges that we have is when we're looking at infill. So for instance, if we're looking at Highland Glen and the post-preserve neighborhood, which was immediately adjacent, had a specific code and built to code, but exceeded their development requirements, the, the application that was, they exceeded it. What we're comparing is not to what was built, but what was passed. And so, sorry, not what was passed, but what was built. So if, for instance, we look at Amberly, that type of neighborhood, they have bigger lots, but I think the application said, you know, 10,000 square foot lots, but they have more. And so when we're looking at, you know, it's comparable in use too, that's very difficult, because once it's, once it's erected, once it's built, that's the source of truth, not necessarily the documentation.
Yeah, and I guess definitely want to hear some more ideas before we dismiss for the evening. One idea that I had had was for each commissioner to take a development project. We would help you research it. You could present it to the rest of the commission as part of the tour. I think it would be an opportunity, right, for some more veteran members, like Warren, to present projects that, you know, potentially he's very proud of, or, or otherwise, and we can kind of learn from each other. Because I'm guessing you all live in different neighborhoods and see different things and those types of.
He's going to present.
Experiences.
Mirror field.
Yeah.
There's a development across from the entrance to Glacier Ridge, residential development. It's on, I don't know if that's, I don't know what, if that's in Dublin or not, but it's very, very dense.
Which part of?
Oh, it's not. It's in the township. It's Epcun.
But that would be really useful to see, because that's the pattern that we've been looking at, that very small lot. I don't know the name of it, but every time I ride my bike up there, I was like, wow, those things are packed in.
Well, if it's like Shivery's Epcun, they're basically four back to back.
No, these are, these are single-family houses, lined right up, varied with 10-foot setbacks.
And it's not Oak Park? It's not the south end of Highland Croy? Oak Park, kind of Tuscan looking?
No, it's not Oak Park. It's not Oak Park. I haven't looked it up yet, so.
Got it.
But we can map it.
I do think that the, right down the street from us, the funeral home, is, is a good exercise. That one came forward. They had a good plan to start with. We put the, you know, finishing touches on as far as requests. Staff did an excellent job at execution on that particular project, and it's beautiful. So I think that's a, that's a good case study. Maybe a not-good one for commercial. Old, again. McDonald's, but not just McDonald's, on perimeter. Sidewalk connectivity there is atrocious. Sidewalk dead ends coming from Giant Eagle. McDonald's doesn't have a sidewalk. Walk to the west where Avery Mirror Field and perimeter intersect. Try to cross the street, and you have to cross three sides. And the sidewalk only runs on the wrong side of perimeter. That one's just atrocious to me.
I've used that, yeah. One time I tried to bike from the office to Piata, I made it. It was a little touch and go.
In a roundabout way.
Yeah. Any other ideas?
This, by the way, is Cranberry Drive off of Brock Road.
Yes.
You know, that area generally.
Yes, that's not in, that's not in Dublin, but that's definitely an Epcun project.
Again, in terms of looking at, that's an issue. You know, issue-related developments that maybe aren't in Dublin, but close by.
We don't have to unpack it and linger, but actually.
Glacier Ridge.
The, what was it? The, the specialty hospital tonight is immediately adjacent, my least favorite building in Dublin.
Oh. The oncology building that was just built?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Other side.
Plain Jane.
Yeah. And, and every time, every time we're in this meeting and I articulate, it needs another level of detail, it needs another level of detail. You're not there yet. That's what, that's the perfect example. There are times we get drawings, and it's early in drawings, and then maybe it's a junior designer. That's the perfect example of that getting through.
I think right down the.
It was immediately adjacent. I think it's, it might be six, six, seven, four, zero. Big numbers on it. Immediately adjacent, immediately west of the specialty hospital we looked at tonight.
See, I think, I think the Plain Jane buildings will end up looking in 10 years like the neighborhood, the commercial neighborhood that's just down the road here on the left-hand side, before you get to Crawell, before you get to that bank or whatever it is on the corner, setback a little bit, but plain, plain Jane buildings.
That, that whole super block that we were just talking about, that in itself, I think, you know, I've, I live right there, so I've watched that evolve, and it, I taught my kids how to drive in there, because it was.
To me, I, I like that particular block, because there are some areas we did really well. I mean, if you look at the Starbucks, you know, the, the bump, nothing but kinks, that section, really well done. There are other areas where maybe we were a little, not as on our game that day.
I don't know if any of us, none of us were on the commission when that was.
Aside from, aside from buildings within it.
Warren.
No, but it's just, it's just not well, it's just, it's just lots that then that people have stuck buildings on, and there's, it's very chaotic, and there's no common, and there's no, the circulation is all over the place.
Even some of the, even some of the architectural aesthetic.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a red, a really, really red brick building in the middle of it that drives me bonkers.
And again, it's, you know, it's that contrast between economic development and planning, and, you know, sometimes the tension works in the wrong way.
Anything else, project-wise?
I was gonna, I mean, Bridge Street's a whole animal in itself, but there's a lot of really great things there, and there's a lot of things.
Any particular part of Bridge Street, Bridge Park?
Particularly, I think, I think the signage should, definitely could be reviewed.
Sandwich ports.
Sandwich ports. Tolliver Flats.
In the hot dog store.
What's that?
In Wendy Wonder.
Tolliver Flats is interesting. Yeah, just the way that it's laid out, and I think it's good to talk about it.
Agreed. Anything else you can make up?
Mark Trudy Goey's got his jacket on.
I got cold, I was hot earlier.
Okay, great. Well, this is definitely a good starting point. I'll keep you posted on the tour. And if you have anything in the interim, you can definitely email me.
Thank you.
So we can't talk about pending cases? We can't, projects, right? Yeah, okay, forget that then.
Great.
All right. Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for sticking with us this evening, and we will see you next time. Meeting adjourned.